I'd like to call the meeting in order, please. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pokenkord?
Here.
And Mayor Davies?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to have everybody stand for our invocation given by Michelle Desmond, and first we'll do the pledge, and I'll have Poggi do the pledge.
Okay.
After the prayer.
After the prayer, remind you that.
Father, we just thank you for this meeting and these people who are so servant-hearted to just spend so much time in this community. Lord, would you bless the proceeding? Would you spread your wisdom all over this place, Lord, in a canopy of love over all decisions to be made in the name that is above every other name? Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Hand on your heart. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My computer's talking to me. Sorry, guys. All right. So I'm going to turn over the time to Ashley.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. So with the resignation of Councilmember Keith Sakowitz on June 26th, a vacancy for District 2 of the City Council was created. Mr. Sakowitz's term is set to expire following the certification of the November 2024 election. As the vacancy occurred in the second half of the term, the council has 60 days from the date of the vacancy, which is this coming Friday, the 25th, to either appoint a qualified candidate to the position or you need to call for a special election. During the June 29 council meeting, council directed staff to publish a notice for appointment to the position. In the city clerk's office, we published two notices in the Tehachapi news, and we received two applications, one from Jeanette Power and the other from Denise Madden. They are both verified residents and registered voters of District 2. They are both president-- present? Sorry, not president.
You got a promotion.
Yeah. Like to call that was an order of application received for any questions the council may have or comments that the applicant would like to make. So first, we're going to call up Jeanette Power. If you'd come to the podium. And you can feel free to make a statement in the council. Feel free to ask any questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to apply. I'm very honored for this position and the ability to apply. So I like to serve my community. I've always been active in the community as a volunteer. I've taught robotics teams. I've been on the Tehachapi Arts Commission. I'm a visitor center volunteer. And up until an hour ago, I was the president of the Greater Tehachapi Chamber of Commerce. It was my last day at the chamber. Before that, I managed Coldwell Banker. I was a local realtor. And all of these things have really given me a really unique insight to the community and how it works. And I really love this community. I've lived here 11 years. It's the longest I've ever lived in one place in my adult life. And while I do not count qualified for the old timers picnic, one day I will. And I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to apply. And do you have any questions for me?
Phil?
Yes, go ahead, please.
No.
How's your health doing? Last time you got up here, you were kind of like that.
Oh, my health?
Yeah.
I'm doing well, thank you.
I know. You look tired.
Oh, Mountain Festival.
Yes.
Oh. That's all I had to say.
Mountain Festival. But that's the only thing I was suffering from. And any other questions?
Yeah, I just comment. Just wanted to tell you, really appreciate all the work that you did on the chamber and everything that you've done. And what a wonderful weekend we had, Mountain Festival, and thank you. And you and Claire, I mean, you or is Claire here? Oh, there she is. I'm sorry. What a wonderful, such a great thing. I know the weather didn't cooperate, but hey, we got through it. And I wanted to tell both you ladies thank you for the hard work you put into it. And what a, what a weekend.
Thank you. One of the things that qualifies me or has given me the skill sets for this position is the work that I did at the Chamber of Commerce, being able to work with the small businesses, the large businesses, working on events and promoting our community and being an advocate for our community. That was our pleasure. Claire and I are very passionate about the Mountain Festival because it brings so much economically to our community. But I think the key word here, too, is community. Tehachapi is a community. We have three, four generations of people who come back every year for Mountain Festival. So while it's a wonderful economic boost, it's also a part of our tradition and heritage. Did you have a chance to see the banner around the-- it was pretty wonderful, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, we had people who were actually photographed in there when they, or had their grandparents photographed in that banner. So it was really, that was really rewarding for us to see that.
I was worried it was going to get damaged with all of--
Nope. We invested in heavy-duty special material that will last 20 years without it being water-resistant. And it's currently drying out. It has to be scoured. So that we can roll it out without any additional damage. So, but any other questions?
I have none. Anybody else got any questions?
Thank you very much. All right, Denise?
Good evening, Mayor Davies and the rest of your councilmembers. I have resided here in the city with my husband for 20 years, going on 21 years. We have raised our three children. I volunteered in the classrooms throughout all Little League and the rec center basketball. My service has continued through my home church, Tehachapi Vineyard Church, where I lead coffee bar ministries. Also, I help lead Vineyard Mobile Meals. If you have seen us in the community, along with sack lunches that we do also. I also am the leader of Love Tehachapi, where we have spread joy and love throughout the city, one act of kindness at a time. Any questions?
Certainly appreciate the love and kindness of that group that you, that you support.
We love--
That a lot for the community, yeah.
Yes, we love our community. And we, we always try to think outside the box in what ways we can help. We've fed people. We have done reverse car washes where we give them a gift instead of them paying for our services. We've cleaned up the community. And we've had, you know, just a few volunteers, up to 100-plus volunteers roaming through the city to spread love. And people are just thrown off by the kindness, but we just love. I mean, there's nothing better than giving people joy, especially throughout after COVID where people really needed a little cheer up, you know? And so I love our community. I would love to continue serving this way. I figure where else can I, you know, serve? And this would be a fantastic way to continue my service. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, if you'd like to open nominations.
Yes, I'd like to open nominations. Gavin?
I would like to nominate Jeanette Power.
Do we have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Denise Madden, please.
All right, we have two nominations. So reminder, oh, you can only vote yes for one. So we'll start with Jeanette Power, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokenkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Okay, we have a 4-0 vote, so we don't need to move on to the next nomination. Jeanette Powers, congratulations.
I just want to say that this was really impossible. I wish you both could come up here. You both do wonderful things in our community, and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
I'd like to also, just, it's so awesome in this city where people want to volunteer. This is not, this doesn't happen anymore in our society that when you ask for volunteers, there's people that just step up. And it's so awesome. And it's really hard to make these decisions about people that want to, you want to do-- like Susan said, I'd like to have you both on there. But, you know, right now, but I would appreciate, you know, Denise, that when things come, other things come available, you know, like planning commission or anything, we'd really like you to apply to be part of our city. So this doesn't stop here, but I really appreciate. And I know you do a lot of volunteers with the Vineyard Church, and I appreciate you doing that. Just everything that you've done for the city and continue to do so, I'd ask you to continue to do so. We're going to take just a moment and recess, and we're going to have a swearing in.
We'll swear in before the recess.
Okay, we're swearing before the recess.
So Jeanette, you'll come on up?
I swear, I have to swear. Yeah. I swear, right.
I, Jeanette Power, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. I do.
Claire, please.
Yeah.
I know. Claire!
We're going to get a picture taken together.
My grubbies.
That was me 10 minutes ago.
We'd like to invite council to come on.
My family got stuck on the other side of the highway. It's okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, lots of cameras. Let's start, let's start right here on me. There you go. And we'll just kind of work our way down the line.
Thank you.
Claudia? And Beth?
Thank you, guys.
Excellent.
Okay.
Very much.
Smile up my voice. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. The time you worked out was so good. Sit there. Grab your things. Yeah.
Congrats.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I want to be the first to congratulate our new city council person on the sitting on the stand.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is denied by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent item-- consent agenda and be considered in the listed sequence with opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Do we have anybody from the audience who would like to have anything removed or from the consent? Staff or council? Phil?
No. No motion to approve, as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokenkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five-zero vote, motion carried.
Okay. Public comment. Tori will read. We have one public comment that was lettered. Tori will read it.
We received this by email from Cory Torres over at Park Center District. Dear Mayor Davies and City Council, I would like to express my appreciation and thanks on behalf of the Tehachapi Valley Recreation and Park District for the vital partnership and support from the City of Tehachapi during Mountain Festival at Central Park. This event brings thousands to our community, and it truly takes a village to see it through. The success of the Mountain Festival is a testament to the strong sense of community and collaboration between so many partners and organizations that exist within our city, starting with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber does an outstanding job each and every year. I am especially grateful for the Public Works Department. Although the festivities were cut short, their support and presence ensured a clean and safe park. I would also like to extend appreciation to the Tehachapi Police Department for their support and presence throughout our Mountain Gallup 5K on Saturday. Our runs are always well attended, and safety is the highest priority. Thank you again to city council and staff for your continued support and partnership. We look forward every year to the Mountain Festival at Central Park and hope to continue building on these wonderful traditions that define and celebrate our community. Thank you, Cory Torres, District Manager.
Good, that's it. Okay. All right, we'll move on to item seven, RSI--
Ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any public--
Oh, do we have any public comments? I'm sorry. No? Okay. Okay, now we'll move to item seven, RSI and dispersments and bills for August 3rd through August 16th. And I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Patrol.
Okay, RSI dispersments and bills for August 3rd, 2023. Do I have any questions from council? From the public? No. Can I have a roll call vote?
Do we need a motion?
Oh, motion.
So move.
Here I do.
So move.
Someone's got--
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokenkord?
Yes.
Four-zero vote with a recusal for Mayor Davies.
How you doing, sir?
Good evening.
Good. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Davies, members of the city council. For those of you who haven't met me, my name is Howard Mayfair, Deputy Public Works Director. And I come to you tonight with the request to approve the agreement with the Walz Group for Phase 2 of the Fog and Industrial Waste Discharge Program. As you may recall, back on March 7th, 2022, so about a year and a half ago, city council approved an agreement with the Walz Group to initiate Phase 1 to update the Fog and Industrial Waste Program. The final portion of Phase 1 to adopt their revisions to the city ordinance, I expect to have that before you in the coming months. To provide some context, this program and the updates to the city ordinance are necessary to ensure that we follow the statewide general waste discharge requirements. Additionally, they help us establish enforceable policies and procedures that reduce the adverse effects of water discharge in the city sewer collection system, which will ultimately flow into the wastewater treatment plant. So in addition to the state requirement that we now are coming, these are on the horizon, this will help protect the wastewater treatment plant from industrial users. So we have industrial users. We have restaurants and food establishments that they already are working within these types of parameters. We do have an existing ordinance. But this is a full update to meet state requirements and also give us some, a little more enforceable actions to take care of issues that we, we deal with. No issues at the time, which is great. But this will get us in, in full compliance. So the Phase 2 with the Walz Group will establish initial contact with the food establishments and industrial users. The Walz Group will walk our staff through that, so they're the experts that are consulted to work right with the, with the staff. Will do some very hands-on training, reach out to all the users. Thankfully, we're not the city of Bakersfield. You know, we can actually go door-to-door to restaurants and the industrial users and have some face-to-face conversation, which is really nice. So we can have, it's not just a form letter out in the mail, which we'll do, we'll do letters and door tags. But the intent is for myself and our staff to make contact directly with, with the team and each individual industrial user and food establishment. So they would, the Walz Group would walk us through that. They would help with implementation, training of our staff, and basically kicking off the first six months of that program. So with the approval of this, we expect this to take about six months. We want to do due diligence, take our time with, with reaching out to the customers. Like I said, most of these customers are well within reason. Most of them self-regulate because we, at this time, we're not out there doing full inspections and asking for reports for their pumping of their grease traps, things like that. So they understand, most of these food establishments, they know they have to do certain things to maintain their systems to operate properly. So I don't anticipate this to be any kind of controversial. And most of them are going to go, yeah, 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 we got it. I've already signed. What have we got to do? That kind of thing. So with that being said, I would like to make a recommendation to the city council to approve the proposal from the Walz Group for industrial waste discharge and fog control program assistance for the amount of $49,520 and authorize the city manager to approve any change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the original contract of $4,152. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions from the public? Or Mr. Newby? Counsel? Phil?
Would you say discharge, are they discharging at the moment anything, or is they collecting it?
Yeah, discharge is any of their wastewater that leaves our facility. So bigger cities would actually have a whole pre-trieteen. There'd be a whole staff that would actually go out and sample the wastewater leaving ChemToole or a restaurant. They would actually sample it to make sure that what they're discharging, because some of these industrial users could have potential solvents or, or heavy metals and things like that. We don't have any, any users like that. So they're already currently discharging to us. But this is to ensure our parameters are given to them. And then there may be some sampling along the way to ensure that they kind of fit within that. But we don't expect any long-term sampling of those facilities.
So the discharge is just normal, day-to-day--
Sewer. Yep.
Like the rest of us?
Yep. Exactly.
It's nothing special?
No.
It sort of appears to be a special discharge--
Yeah.
Situation, whereas we're preventing anything--
Yes, exactly. Yeah, the residential users is, you know, typical, typical sewer, right?
Yes.
Industrial users is whatever they're using to process or to maybe manufacture something. You know, ChemToole is the easy one, right? They're, they're right here. They're a massive facility. They're, they're a great partner of ours. They don't, they're, they're always wanting to comply. And they definitely self-regulate. But yeah, they're not discharging anything crazy. It's just processed water and things like that.
Okay. Poggi? Nothing? Thank you, sir. Well, I need a motion?
I so move.
Roll call vote, please?
Call a second.
Oh, a second, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokenkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five-zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Jay. Item 10, the Valley Boulevard Recreational Park bid award.
Mayor and councilmembers, I've got a busy night for it tonight, so I'll try to get through these. Quickly, we've had a lot happening in the last couple of weeks. So the first item is the Valley Boulevard Recreational Park bid award. So as you were all aware, we applied for a Clean California grant to produce or construct a one-acre park located at the intersection of Mountain View and Valley Boulevard. The park is to include landscaping, shade trees, picnic sites, a playground, and a miniature soccer field, as well as a parking lot and the associated lighting and fencing that goes with a facility of that nature. And on June 20th, we begin advertising for that, and we open bids for that project on July 26th. Results of the bid are included in, in the staff report. We received three bids with relatively similar pricing. It's a really volatile bidding climate right now. I know that the last project I brought to you was the Valley Boulevard Repave Project. And we talked about, we have only received one bidder for that project, and so that was a complicated, difficult bidding climate to work with. This is better. We're glad we received three bidders for this project, three good numbers. But, but like the Valley Boulevard project, these bids came in higher than the engineers estimate, which I would attribute largely to inflation, among other things, and then also to-- I think there is a backlog of public work resulting from COVID that's frankly still going to last another couple of years. And so after COVID, very little public work was being done in the, during COVID and the year or two after. And now finally, cities and counties are getting their projects out. And so there's a fair amount of work for the contractors to choose from. The last factor is, is there's a lot of new money coming down from the government due to the, largely the Build Back Better program from the federal government. Clean California is a perfect example of that. This is a brand-new Cycle 1 grant funding from the governor that didn't exist prior to the governor's desire to have this program that we went after. So those are the reasons why I think bids are coming in higher than planned. But the issue now becomes, what do we do about that? So first, in compliance with the Public Contract Code, we undertook a review of the bids and did determine that the low bidder received from, or the low bidder received from JTS Construction is responsive. And then we set about trying to figure out how to evaluate the budgetary situation. So the total expected project budget is now 2.875 million, so 2,875,000. The total amount of funds that we have from the Clean California program is just under 2.1 million. So we have approximately a $700,000 to $800,000 budget deficit on this project. And so we were trying to determine how best to handle that. We do have a couple of bid alternatives. And as a brief reminder to the council how those work, you can legally, under the Public Contract Code, you can determine a base bid, which is the primary project. And then you can have any sort of cocktail of bid alternates that you'd like to create to give yourself some flexibility for the size of the project when it comes to this moment, the moment of award of the project. So bid alternative number one was to repave and reconstruct Linden Court, which is the small-- maybe we can, well, we can, we can talk about the project layout if you want. That's, that's the little cul-de-sac that accesses the park off of Aspen from behind. So Valley Boulevard is there along the top of the street, and Linden Court, and that's the intersection of Valley and Mountain View where that offset signal is. And then Linden Court is the little cul-de-sac that accesses the back of the park. So we had a bid alternative for repaving that because that cul-de-sac's not in very good shape. And we kind of thought we might want to be able to repay it if we could. And then the second bid alternative was to construct a dry sewer line onto the site for any potential use. Maybe one day we needed a restroom on the side or something to that effect, we'd have the sewer line in place. That was the secondary item. So we, staff initially focused on the base bid plus bid alternative number one. We didn't deem the sewer line desirable enough to justify continued additional spending. So that's where we focused and we looked at, and included there in the staff report is an assessment of the components of the project, design, environmental, owner furnished work, construction management, and then JTS's bid for base bid plus bid alternate number one. And so that's how we see the difference in bid, about $700,000 to $800,000 deficit that's there. So our proposal tonight is that we would award this project and we have a couple of different ways to address the budget shortfall. The first is, is that we believe we can utilize SB1 funding, streets and roads money, gas tax money for the repaving of Linden Court because it's a qualified expense. We'll have to make the proper reports to the state in October, but we believe we can do that. So that's one way to bring down the cost, recover that cost. The second piece is that staff is desirous of getting together with the contractor once awarded and working through some value engineering options that we have. We're looking at some of the fencing choices that we made and some of the picnic area choices that we made and we believe we may be able to negotiate with the contractor to do some value engineering and bring down the cost of the project. And then finally, we looked and talked to the City Manager and Finance Director about whether some general funds, general fund money could be made available to help support this project, which they do appear to be available. So from those three sources, we believe we can make up the $785,000 delta, about $200,000 in SB1, about $200,000 in value engineering savings, and about $300,000 in general fund money. So that's our rough estimate this time. And so with all of that, we do recommend, we feel like the park is too good to pass up 2.1 million because our choice is either go forward, find the money, or not do the park. And so if we can afford to, it seemed like we really needed to pursue that. So that is my recommendation, is that you award the Valley Boulevard Recreation Park to JTS Construction in the amount of $2,155,570. That's base bid plus bid alternate number one. And authorize the City Manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 5% of the construction cost for $107,890. So that concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Do we have any questions from the public with this item? Council?
Jay, when would we, when would this project start? Right now it's kind of, you know, iffy weather and do we start in the fall or are we going to start in the summer?
No, we would start now. We've always been trying to, and this, we had planned to bring this to the last council if the bids had come in in a more desirable level for us. So the goal has always been to try to be done before Christmas because that's always the date I tell people is when the weather turns and you cannot rely on defined days to pave or to plant trees or something like that at that point. We still think we can make that deadline, so we would start immediately. It's about a six to seven month contract, we're a little behind that, but the goal would be to sit down with the contractor and try to arrive on that target.
Susan?
No, actually he answered it.
No, I just, you know, I've been looking at it a lot, researching that area, looking, there's nothing in that area. I think it's going to be a great, really nice for that area right there, especially on the Boulevard, do we make that fencing look good and keep it, you know? My big thing was I want to make sure that we keep the kids safe. We're going to have to do some heavy-duty fencing because there's a lot of people drive real fast on that road.
Yeah, there's actually going to be a little slope up from the road to the park proper. So in the front, if you go to the map, Tori, I won't do a whole tour, I promise. But out of, this is the landscaping plan, but the front 30 or 40 feet is just landscaping and a primary entry monument. And then there is a four-foot fence there that the police will be able to see through, but that's actually up a couple of feet from the sidewalk.
Okay.
And so the whole site is elevated up a little bit. The entry monument helps to really frame the site and it's actually a wall itself, the monument is signed, so I think it's going to be really safe. We put the fencing for both purposes, both also because we didn't want soccer balls to go on the valley. And so there are picnic areas and then the play area, then the five-side soccer field and then the parking with a lot of lightings all through the site in the background, so.
I think it's going to be a really nice complement to that area. That area's been neglected, I shouldn't say neglected for a long time, but it's something we don't have in that area, so.
Yeah, that's actually how we had such a successful grant application was by utilizing the demographic data that we have in that area and then its proximity to other facilities. That's how we built the case for the park in the first place, so.
Okay, great. Bill?
Can you use some of the SB1 funds for the construction management portion, a piece of it?
Yeah, yeah, actually you can. A proportional share to the road.
And design and environmental. Part portion of that be for the road part?
I don't know about design and environmental, I'll have to go back and look at the regulations because we spent that money already. But the construction management, you could use a proportional share. So if the, if the road is 200,000 and the whole contract is 2 million, then 10% roughly you might be able, so that's a good thought. And yeah, we'll absolutely consider that, see if we can shift that.
Just a little shift here and there. And then on the sewer, we're not going to do that at the moment.
Correct, we are not recommending doing that.
We can do that in-house possibly?
We can do it in the future. The goal would be to, we'd probably wait for a while because the whole thought was to do it before we repay Linden Court.
Good idea.
But again, with no future plan to utilize the sewer line, we looked at bids and we just went, you know, that's just money, it's just more money that we have to find. So that's why staff recommends that you don't. I mean, but if you guys felt strongly that we should, we can, but we do not recommend to do that.
That's fine. Go ahead, Pogie.
You know, I'm looking at this and thinking, maybe it would, maybe your demographics said something different, but I thought maybe the parking should be closer to Valley with the kids' back further. Is there any explanation?
No, we thought about that in both directions and I think it ended up being a 50-50 split because do you want the toddler play area nice and close to Valley where police patrols will see it on a regular basis, or do you want the parking there? Well, you kind of want both to be highly visible, honestly. The other part is off Linden, we felt like it was safer for traffic turning motions. If we moved the parking up front, we would have to access the parking off of Valley Boulevard, which is a lot busier. Whereas now, you can safely turn onto Aspen and onto Linden, take your time if you've got to scream the kids in the minivan, it's a little safer. So honestly, it was a 50-50 decision and our thought was instead what we did to deal with the concerns over parking locations, made sure that we have a lot of lighting back there. There's, there's three of our decorative, four actually, of our decorative streetlights that are all going to be right around the parking lot. So the parking lot should, they're not super tall, so they won't create a problem for the neighborhood, but they're, with the number of them that are there, the parking lot should be pretty well-lit all the time. So usually you keep the lights there and it stays safe and, you know.
Lighting is good for neighborhoods.
Correct, yes, I agree. So that was our reasoning and, you know, felt like it was a, you know, you can, you pick a different, a couple of different ways to skin that cat, so to speak, but we liked this opportunity particularly for vehicle safety.
I'm just pleased that we got a new facility for recreation for the kids in the neighborhood where they don't have to cross Valley, go down to the other D Street.
D Street. Yeah, we're excited to see how well-used the park, the soccer park is. Our sincere hope is that we will see a handful of kids in there every day that the weather permits, you know, kicking them all around and being not on, playing video games, taking a guy with two sons, you know, out there kicking soccer balls a lot better, so.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve.
I so move.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Posenkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five, zero, vote, motion carried.
Item 11, Jake?
Sir, so the second item, similarly good news, is the 2324 grind and overlay project. The specific roads are DEF, Poly, and the Northside Alleyways. So we sought to improve those specific roads that I just listed due to cracking, veiling asphalt. And on July 23rd, advertising began for the projects. We opened bids for that project on August 16th and the bid results are listed there. So here we have a better bidding circumstance, which, anyway, I've been racking my brain over, you know, the best way to describe what I think is occurring. A, I think that, because this is very similar paving to just what just occurred on Valley, where we only got one bidder and it came in significantly over budget. This bid from Granite Construction is very close to the engineer's estimate for the project and the estimates were frankly formed at the same time between both projects. And I think the single biggest factor that's different is the time that we've granted to the contractor to execute this project. This would be done this year again, but unlike the Valley Boulevard project where we were asking the contractor to get in and get done before school opened, here we're giving the contractor, you know, four months to execute the project. And so I think that was a major factor in the number of bidders that we had and then therefore the value of the bid that we received was by giving contractor more time. They can fit this into their schedule and therefore can give us a more advantageous price. So we evaluated the bids in accordance with the Public Contract Code and deemed the Granite Construction Company bid to be responsive. So all construction and construction administration costs for the project were to be funded by a mixture of gas tax funds and streets and roads funds and, and the streets and roads being aligned, shared. So you can see we had a budget of about $900,000 for the entire project, that's what was budgeted in the, well, budgeted, you guys just about did and do. And so we need about an additional $100,000 to deliver the project considering all of the soft costs and the construction costs associated with it. And so again, we sat down with staff and we know that SB1 is a qualified expense for SB1 and we believe we have $100,000 from that fund to supplement this project. So we need a total of $1 million budget and that's, that's the fiscal impact. So briefly, again, the project is to repave sections, maybe if you could go to the map? Do we have a map? So DEF and Poly Street, they're highlighted in yellow. Mount Curry, that also looks highlighted in yellow, but maybe for a different highlighting. So hopefully you can see the limits. And then what we're doing that's unique this time, and I know that Councilmember Smith, you'll hear, you've been talking to us about figuring out this puzzle, is that we have the idea of taking some of the grindings that will come off this road, these roads, which are to receive new asphalt, and see if we can take them to some of our alleyways.
Perfect.
And have these contractors excavate the alleyways, bring in three inches of grindings, there's the map for that, and provide a refreshed surface. Not a railroad, it would be compacted grindings, but something that's a vast improvement to these alleyways. So got a good price for that?
Good.
About $50,000 to do those three alleys.
Well, they're just such, I mean, they're not really roadways anymore, they're just dirt.
They're dirt.
With a little asphalt.
Correct. So, and so that's going to take some free work. I know that public works is going to be going out in advance and trimming trees and preparing for it. We're not going to be raising or lowering utilities through that area, so that's how we kept the cost down. But we, again, to the point, we think it's a vast improvement. So with all that said, I suggest, I recommend that you award the 2324 grind and overlay of DEF, Poly, and the Northside Alleyways to Granite Construction Company in the amount of $877,702 and authorize the City Manager to approve any necessary change orders up to the maximum of 5% of the construction cost of $43,885. That concludes my report.
Do we have any comment for the public? Counsel?
I have a question.
Yes, Greg.
Have we ever used Granite Construction Company in the past?
Yes, numerous times. Granite's a well-known entity, probably the largest single paving outfit in the state of California, a multi-billion dollar corporation. And they've had a current county office for, since long before I was an engineer here. So yeah, very reputable firm, worked with them on many occasions. I think the last project that they did for us is Tashby Boulevard between Light Robinson and Hayes. They did that overnight, does that sound right?
I think my holiday degree.
I think it would agree.
Yes.
Yeah. So that was the recent project they did. That was a nighttime project they delivered in a week. So they know how to do this type of work.
Susan? All right, I have, I think it'd be beautiful. I was riding my scooter the other day down S Street and I had my soda in my little holder and I lost it all.
You still have your teeth there.
Yeah, I lost my soda though, so. But no, I think that'd be a great improvement. I'll get to some of the neighbors in that area that asked about that, so I think I spoke that to Greg about it and so they're going to look, they're going to be happy about this is going to happen, so appreciate it, all right. Need to make, have a motion?
So move.
I'll second it. Phil? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
We'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Posenkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five, zero, vote, motion carried.
Item 12, annexation of number three to Community Facilities District?
Yes, sir. So the final item tonight, we've done this a few times in the last year, so hopefully this will all be ringing a bell. For you, this is a multi-step process for annexing pieces of property into the city's Community Facilities District, which was developed in 2017 and very creatively titled, Community Facilities District Number 2017-1. It's a Melrose Community Facilities District and it is a, an assessment on properties within that district, improved properties within that district. And once improved, those properties pay an additional assessment to the city of Tashby for, and the primary purposes of the CFD were to support the cost of policing, roadway maintenance, and landscaping maintenance in support of those developments, be it in commercial or residential. And so this is, there's a multi-step process, but there are two stops here with the council. The first is tonight, is the intent meeting in which you guys, if you agree with what staff is recommending, will declare your intent to levy or annex this property into the CFD and levy taxes on them in the future. And then there'll be a second stop. We will then at that point mail the ballots out to the property owners who choose to vote themselves in or not. It is a condition of approval of the development we're going to be talking about. And then we'll come back here, open the ballots, and then you all will make a decision about whether to actually annex them on that night. So that's the background. The project tonight is the Pinion and Curry Condominiums Project. This is a 37 condominium unit project on two pieces of property located near the intersection of Pinion and Curry. I think there is a map in some of the support documents. It may take a minute to find it, it's buried in there. But again, the way this works is you annex into the CFD, but you do not begin to pay a levy until the property is improved. So right now, both pieces of property are vacant. And so if it stays vacant forever, there will not be any additional levy. But if and when the property develops into these condominiums at that point and they become habitable units in the next tax year after that, they will be levied. So will land services provide this for us again? These resolutions, the balloting and the process, they've done this for us in the past. The others have gone smoothly. So the resolution of intention is the first step in the process of annexing these development properties into CFD 2017-1. The levy could begin as early as fiscal year '24, '25, but begin based upon whether or not the property's developed prior to that date. The tax rates are included as exhibits to the staff report. That's the taxation, those are the values, those are the original from 2017 and then the S, and there is an escalation clause associated with them and they, I think it's actually backed up, as you can see, they're being, I'm sorry.
We should have gone over this.
We should have talked about the sequence here.
It's kind of funny.
But anyway, the proposal tonight, as we look for that, is to initiate the proceedings to annex the project into CFD Number 2017-1, public services, to pay for the impact of the development, the city services pertaining to landscaping, there it is, street maintenance and lease services. So my recommendation is that you all declare your intent to annex into the CFD pursuant to the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982. And my formal recommendation is you adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Tashby, California, declaring its intention to annex territory of Pinion Curry Condominiums to a Community Facilities District and to authorize the levy of special taxes therein, the City of Tashby Community Facilities District Number 2017-1, public services, annexation number three. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public comment?
It's more of a question.
Yes, it's on.
Play it, Elliot. My question is for Jake probably. So have both sides of this been gone through planning commission? I thought one was not through planning commission yet.
Correct. Well, I'll answer the question if you like. May I?
Yes, please.
Both projects were approved through planning commission. The maps are not both done yet. So the both condominium projects were approved by planning commission, boy, I want to say, oh, at least six months ago. Yeah. So they first brought the project forward and then a condition of approval for both projects was both the production of a tentative track map for the condominium and for this annexation. So we finished one map, that's what was most recently brought to the planning commission, and the other map is still in process, but there is no reason we can't do the adoption because the way the CFD works is it's the property boundary itself, not the map, that determines whether it's in or out of the CFD. So both were approved by planning commission, both were conditioned to do this adoption, only one map. So they still have more work to do on one of the two sites, but it doesn't change my recommendation. Hopefully that answers the question.
Again, I have a few more questions. I'll do them both at once. So my next question is, do, does this project also have a requirement for an HOA? And have you looked at what the additional cost for these supposedly affordable condominiums is going to be when you put this tax on and have an HOA? And whether this is in keeping with your attempt, I hope, to provide more housing? You know, I just wonder with these things, if you're not pricing these projects out? That's a question, not a comment. Thank you.
If you'd like to ask, yes, please. So yes, there is an HOA. And speaking to the larger issue, that's a subjective one, that's debatable certainly. No, I have not done an overall analysis because a lot of the expenses that determine the affordability of the condominiums outside of my control, i.e. how they build the condominium, that's the primary cost associated with it. I do know that the developer seems fairly savvy. This is just a judgment statement from me to you as a council, is they seem to know their business. They have extensive budgets for the development of these projects, for the development of the HOA. I've been working with the city attorney on the review of the CCNRs and the documents associated with the HOA to determine whether they will be efficacious, but overall, it's a valid question. It's a market-based question. The condominiums are in single buildings, which is unique. So many condominium units now are triplexes or quadplexes that are then populated on a site. That's maybe a more conventional way. In both of these cases, with the exception of a handful of units, these are a single building with ground floor and second floor condominium units. So frankly, the buildings are shaped a lot more like an apartment, but are still condominiums, still legal, they can still sell second floor or ground floor. So that helps with affordability because that construction cost is significantly less than if you cut them up into triplexes or quadplexes or duplexes. But yeah, it's a fair question to ask. The affordability issue, the developer appears to know their market and know what they intend to sell them for, which is the best sign I can give you that this step is not unreasonable in the overall action. The other question, way I accept that I would place in your thinking is, is building more housing and adding more expense to the police force or to our public works department without the revenues necessary to support them is also within the purview and judgment of the council. There are certain, in certain cases, I would say, certain developments we shouldn't do if they don't bring value to the residents of this community and end up being a drain on our resources. So we've got to weigh both of those options as we move forward with that. But that's the best commentary I can give on that. I don't, I'm not able to provide a definitive answer. I simply don't, don't have all the pieces. And even if I did, my judgment, I'm still the guy of the city. I'm not the guy making the money, so.
Glad you did that answer.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Do we have any more public comment? Counsel?
Jay, what's the proximity of this to Tompkins?
Right across, catty corner across the street. So in fact, that vacant lot immediately across Curry is one of the two properties that are part of this.
Okay.
So that.
The two properties are on either side of Pinion.
So back to this, so Tompkins is right here. That's Tompkins. This is the Anglican Church.
Okay.
Tompkins Anglican Church. Well, and Pinion Street is separating the two projects.
Correct.
Only concern I have is that most of the little house right on the very corner.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a sore thumb. Are they gonna put a, I wouldn't want a, I don't know. Has anybody approached the owner of that house?
Yes, they did. I begged them when they came to us. I said, "Buy that property and make it part of this condominium." But, and they did, they approached and made an offer, but they were unable to tie the two together. So we've made the public improvements through this area. So the house is in a finished condition. Whether it otherwise meets our standards, that's a, there's a code enforcement conversation there about landscaping, but aside from that, it's about a single-family house that's habitable to the best of our knowledge at this point, so.
I just like, you know, we're gonna build this condominium around it, there need to be some type of fencing around there to?
So there will, the condominium sites are fenced.
Okay.
And gated, both of them are.
Okay.
And then we own the property where our well is located, as well as some of the vacant land between where our wells at, that's Tori's got her pointer on it, yep, that's where the wells at, and that property that you were speaking about, Mayor. So we own that as well. So I'd say maybe let's see if this occurs, see if this development happens. And if it does, you know, then we'll see what we can do to improve the area. The property itself, though, I think is where you guys are saying that you've got concerns and, you know, it's private property.
Has this always been high-density residential land? Has it been zoned that way?
Yes, this is zone R2, so medium-density residential. But yes, they are within the boundaries of the zoning, yep. And so, yes, and it's been that way since, since I've been a city engineer, so 20 years this land is always expected to be a higher density than a single-family home.
Is there any special thing like Section 8 or any of that associated with this at all?
No, they're not, to my knowledge. The site is not affordable housing using the capital A, which means tax subsidized housing. Section 8 is not, is not what many people think that Section 8 means that somebody helps pay to build the house. That is not the case. Section 8 is a voucher provided by the county to help subsidize rent costs. So that's the government helping the individual tenant pay the rent. And we are not able to regulate the way Section 8. But I'm getting too technical. So this development is not in moving that direction in any way, shape, or form. We've seen the plans, we've seen the drawings, it's a very nice-looking development. The HOA will be very interested in maintaining the value of the properties.
And we wouldn't know any way if it was Section 8.
Correct.
Susan?
Well, I just wanted to say that I can rent my house to someone if they show up with a Section 8 voucher. I mean, everybody thinks that you build a track and you say Section 8 and it goes down the tube, that's not the way it is. And it's really a misnomer through the years of how Section 8 works.
Right. If you have a poorly designed neighborhood, it can go that direction. But that, you know, it's important too for us to recognize, we have to have housing for all types of people as well. So that's my job, is to provide, you know, recommendations to you all about how best to do this. So this is a good medium-density development project, in my opinion, and I think it fills a needed niche in our community if they can get it all together for selling condominiums to folks who maybe aren't ready or don't want to buy single-family residence with all the property they're taking, so.
Okay, that's my question. So these will be single-family units, but they'll be condominiums?
They will, yeah, I believe they are.
Occupancy units will be a single-family per building or no?
Or anything.
Well, I think it's whatever you want to purchase it. I think they're two-bedroom or three-bedroom units.
That's what I mean.
Correct.
But they're detached from each other, they're not?
No, they're connected. They're all in a centralized building together.
Oh, I didn't, I thought you said they were not, that they were like detached somehow.
No, I'm sorry. It must've been, as I was trying, in this case, they are not, they are, they are built, frankly, the way a large apartment complex would be built.
Right.
Into a centralized building, all connected together. But they are condos.
Yes.
So that they can be sold instead of an apartment complex, which is owned by the apartment complex owner.
And they rent out each apartment.
And they're all rental guaranteed.
You're an owner of a beach.
Yes.
A beach unit.
Correct.
But, okay, now it makes a lot more sense.
Sorry.
Okay.
Apologize.
Which also leads to the ownership and the HOA, it tends to lend itself to the property being kept up.
Better maintenance. So for instance, within the CCR, we're off topic here, but CCR reviews, we've asked for provision that 50% plus one be owner-occupied units so that the HOA stays healthy and it doesn't. So, you know, some of the provisions like that that help to maintain the neighborhood.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Did we see a cross-section or any?
No, you're not approving tonight any of the like, the development itself, so.
I thought we saw some of this. We just saw the concept.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions from council? Okay, roll call vote please?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry? I'll second it.
Right, Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Mayor Pochettino Pogbonkore?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero, vote motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. City manager reports. Mr. Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor Davies. We had one heck of a weekend. The 60th Annual Mountain Festival. Thank you to the Chamber, Jeanette, Claire, everyone that participated, numerous volunteers. But as we moved through the weekend, we had a hurricane that turned into a tropical depression and we experienced a lot of rain. And then there was even an earthquake just south of us. So I just want to say thank you to, first to the Chamber, relationship and their leadership, that's for sure. But thank you to all of the residents of the city of Tatchee and the community that heeded the warnings. So Jeanette and I, when you were part of the Chamber of Commerce, we communicate a lot. We, Chief of Police, we actually had our executive staff in this room on Friday, I believe, and Saturday. And so people you see out here, we sat around the table and talked about different scenarios and what-ifs and what will you do if this happened and so on and so forth. We did not open an EMC, but certainly we communicated with each other and made sure that we were ready. Over the course of the weekend, five and a half inches of rain, most of it was on Sunday. It's unprecedented amount of rain. A big shout out to our public works department, Dawn, Tyler, and their men and women. They were out and about, working, keeping storm drains open and clear, which was key to managing our situation. We wanted the water to flow. Prior to that, of course, Jay and his team had been designing and engineering these storm drain systems. And every year, we're bringing projects to you that enhance our city, not just above ground, but below ground. And that's so ever-important. And this was, this was a, this was a big test for our storm drain system, the retention basins, the detention basins, the inlets, the outlets, you know, how we manage five inches of rain in 12 hours. And our guys, five-star. Our police department, our dispatch were there, our public works were there, city management, we were all up, basically for all three days. Monitoring, networking, I was in constant contact with Senator Shannon Grove, Assemblyman Vince Fong, Speaker of the House Kevin McCarthy, staff, Kern County EOS, the National Weather Service briefings, and just communicating on and on with our colleagues within other cities in Kern and the county of Kern, the state, and even the federal government. We did have to cancel the events on Sunday, unfortunately, but it was the right call in the interest of public safety. It was absolutely the right call without hesitation. I want to thank all of the Chamber participants, vendors, for their instant approval of what we were doing. There was no hesitation. Gal Caldwell for the events in Robert Park, all of the vendors in Central Park, TMRA, you know, the rodeo, on and on and on. Everyone just really rose to the occasion. The county of Kern, I spoke with Chief Aaron Duncan this afternoon again, and it looks like they're going to declare a state of emergency because of the damage. He estimates at this point about a $5 million county-wide damage, county roads and others out in the desert. I know there was a lot of washing out of roads and things. We may, we may tag on to that. I may come to you and ask for that. We have the ability for myself to declare, but then we have to ratify it with the city council within seven days, as you recall. And so Jay and Dawn and Andrew have been assessing some items in the city. We don't have a lot of damage. It's incredible, the small amount of damage that we do have. No one was hurt, which is the best part. But on Tatchee Boulevard, there's some outlets that were damaged, different things. And so there's, there's a way that we can tag on to the county of Kern and put in our piece of the puzzle, if you will, $100,000, $800,000, I'm not sure. Public Works, as you've seen tonight, it costs a lot of money to do these things. Storm drain systems are, they're not cheap. And so we're gonna be looking at that. We may or may not come to you with that, but I want you to know that we are assessing the damage, as minimal as it is, but we have some work to do, that's for sure. And so just want to close by saying, you know, Tatchee thrives because of the people who live and work here. And we're all on the same page. We communicated with people, they understood what we were saying, and they, you know, went to their homes and safeguarded their families. And getting five, five and a half inches in one day is unprecedented, and we passed the test with five stars. So thank you to all of the city employees, key communication, Cory was helping me, Dawn and Tyler and his guys were just, they were out there, literally, I was, I drove around a lot and I would roll up on them and they were cleaning drains. You can't have drains clogging with this amount of rain. Storm drains fall curb-to-curb in some areas. River Curry was flowing.
Yes.
It flows once or twice a year. But it's directed, it's designed and engineered by a world-class engineering team that continues to seek out grants, matching funds because we have a healthy budget and we make those improvements. So we'll continue to do that, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Great. That's it. Counsel? Phil?
How many storm drains do we have? Like Tatchee City, Tatchee Boulevard, what's the size of that?
The drain in Tatchee Boulevard?
Yes.
Is that a four?
36-inch or bigger?
No, it's bigger than that.
I think it's six.
You can almost stand on it, it's like 54 or 60 inches.
Almost six, but.
Four.
That's our main one.
The biggest one is on Tucker. It's, it's a, it's six feet. Running down Tucker, that one's six feet in diameter.
Where does it start?
Right there by Taco Bell and Jack in the Box. It flows all the way to the sump by behind Walgreens.
Right, okay.
North of Walgreens. And then the one on Tatchee Boulevard, I want to say it's 54 inches at its biggest, but.
And it goes from Hayes? It goes from Hayes to Mill?
Yeah, actually, the one there on Tatchee Boulevard starts inside, boy, South of Coy Burnett, in at the JMS property, comes out to Tatchee Boulevard and then runs all the way down to Tatchee Boulevard and then drops into a ditch right there next to our parking lot.
Yes.
And that's where, one of the spots where we, you know, we went and looked at it today, we had some stuff to do there. But then, and gets bigger as it goes and then it picks up, that's lots of inlets all the way. I couldn't tell you the number of inlets in town, we probably have 200 to 300 maybe?
To the inlets. To the storm drain system?
Yeah, in different places, yeah. We do have some mapping that we did a few years ago.
Yeah, I was curious about it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever added up, you know, like we have a count on the number of miles road we have. I don't think I've ever added up all the ways.
But what's underground is very important.
Oh, yeah.
Because I remember where Taco Sandwich is, living there, watching across the street at the Richfield Station, that water was curb-to-curb during storms. Is this pre-72? Yes. And then when we moved over to Mill Street in 1960, I remember a foot of water coming down Mill Street. And that's prior to the flood control dams that we have.
Yeah.
And the channels that are south of Highline Road, all of that, we just take for granted as we're driving through, look at the split on Highline. But that all occurred years ago for a specific reason because we're in a flash flood area. It comes right straight off the mountain and the crops. And railroad is this giant berm right across the center of town?
Yes. And all the water comes down, gets the berm and floods downtown.
It used to be sometimes with the way people would plow the field, it would be a ripple and kind of hold it back, or if it's plowed to the other direction or south, it just washed on through, mud everywhere. So it has, there's a reason for all that, that big project, Tatchee Boulevard, was an enormous project. And it is really, so all these things and the two dams, I think with that much rain, I'm surprised still that we didn't have more issues.
I was shocked, too.
I wasn't as surprised myself.
Yeah.
I'm not the guy that's supposed to know.
But we talked, you said, "I have a little worry."
It's a lot of work.
Yes.
Coby?
Just thank you for the success of the run in the morning and the parade and then up until the rain in the park. And I noticed, I went going out to Fair Valley this morning, there really wasn't, I was shocked that there really wasn't much, there's some mud on the road, but that.
It was fortunate.
And a few rocks down and that was it. But I was really pleased and shocked because we did have that. And I felt the earthquake and that was kind of cool. I thought something was shaking my couch. Yeah.
Jeanette?
Yeah. I'd like to thank the police, the public works, the city of Tatchee, and the Boy Scouts. When we decided to evacuate the park or close the park and get people out during Mountain Festival, we had six to eight police cars blocking the exits so we could control people coming in to get their goods, to pull out, because we were very concerned about pedestrians, we talked about that. And we had a troop of Boy Scouts who came, who were selling beef jerky at Mountain Festival, and they worked for six to seven hours. Claire can talk about that. 14 boys worked six to seven hours in the rain, breaking down our tables, breaking down our chairs, helping vendors take their tents down, helping them pack up and carry their goods. And several, several vendors said, you know, "We've always loved coming to Mountain Festival And several, several vendors said, you know, "We've always loved coming to Mountain Festival, because it's so nice here, but this doesn't happen anywhere." So we're going to do something special for the Boy Scouts to recognize, but we didn't even have to ask. But a huge thank you, because we had, I don't even know how many thousands of people in the park, and people want to pack up. We had a hundred, over a hundred vendors who want to pack up so their items don't get damaged. So they're anxious, but we were able to control the egress safely, so no one was injured. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Susan?
I can't really add anything to that, except that our staff were ox.
Yeah.
You know, I would not want to be on the city council anywhere else in the state of California after yesterday. But I haven't even seen any, there's always some kind of snarky comment on Facebook. None. It was amazing to me. And, you know, yesterday I thought I could build a swimming pool in my backyard. Today I get up, it's dry, and my gardeners came and mowed the lawn. I was, you know, I figured they would say, "Oh, God, we can't even cover then a mile of your house." But it was amazing, and that's all that drainage, all that planning, that doesn't just take a couple of years. It takes an investment of decades, and you guys have all been doing it all along. Thank you.
I'd like to just add to everybody's comments. It was an awesome weekend for everything, the parade went off real well. And I know, I think we had eight or nine people didn't show up, parade contestants?
I believe we had just short of forty entries at one point. So, yeah, it was the largest parade we've had forever. And it was also one of the larger equestrian parades we've had in a long time, too.
Everything went off real well, because I know we changed the routing a little bit, but everything was, everybody was happy. And then it made my days when I got home Saturday from the parade. My neighbors were, had a twin-size air mattress floating down the gutters Sunday. And I thought, "That's really silly, but I wish I could do that." But I did. No, but no, it's everybody's attitude, you know, at the rodeo, I know we had to cancel it. I was there earlier and heard a little bit of a gruff, but, you know, after they offered everybody, "Go to the VIP tents and have free food and beer," I think that made everybody happy, so everybody was happy with that. So we kind of made the worst to the best. I wouldn't say it was the best one, but at least it kind of helped.
It had potential for being the best one.
We'll do the sixty-first, it will be the best. Now, I appreciate everybody's comments tonight, and if there's no other comments from anybody, the meeting's adjourned.